We have one more minute.
Okay, well, I'll wait for one more minute.
Yeah, see if Jeff can.
There he is. Jim is here.
Oh, good.
Well, there's Jim.
I'm wearing a sweatshirt because I had to turn the heat in my house today.
Oh, I know. Everyone, tomorrow you'll be turning it off, though.
I pulled all the air conditioners out yesterday.
I heard it's supposed to be 80 on Saturday.
That would be nice. That'll be nice. All right, so why don't we get started? I'll do my reading as I call the meeting to order. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the library trustees is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Members of the public who would like to participate in the meeting via Zoom can do so by clicking on this long link that I will not read. Members of the public who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may also do so by telephone, by dialing 1-929-436-2866, and then during meeting ID, 82694597674, and press pound and pound again at the next voice prompt. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment, but following the steps previously noted, then pressing star nine on their telephone keypad or using the raise hand function on Zoom. This will notify the meeting host, that's Brad, that the caller wishes to speak. In the event that despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide for real-time access, we'll post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. So I call the meeting to order. Looks like it is 7:01. And we will do our roll call, and I'm going to do it in the order that I see people in Zoom. So I'm going to start with Brad. Brad, are you here?
I am. I was muted. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. And I'm Jeff Nussbaum. Tina, are you here?
Yes, I am. Tina Stewart, Library Director.
Gloria?
Yes, I'm here. Gloria Cochran.
All right, Eileen?
Eileen Richter will hear.
Right, Don?
Don Pearson here.
Jim?
Jim O'Meara here.
Kathleen?
Kathleen Reynolds here.
All right, and I believe Dan Hall is absent. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, meeting is called to order, back to the agenda. So we're on to approval of the minutes from our July 28 meeting. And I lost my minutes. Just had them. While you're going over yours, I'm going to look for my lost minutes. There's my minutes. Fortunately, I already looked over them. Does anybody need any more time to go over the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes or any discussion on the minutes?
Yeah, there is a, under the section, Piggy Cane Reading Garden Update.
Yes.
I wonder if there's something perhaps missing after Boulder similar.
Yeah, like maybe similar to something, something, something.
I can't remember. Can you, Gloria, what that could be? Right now, I can't remember what it was supposed to be similar to. There may have been something.
Maybe just a hobo.
Is it the plaque and the band of room?
No, I don't think so.
What if we delete the word similar?
That probably would be, make more sense in that case. Good catch, Don.
And the boulder at the end of the sentence there is misspelled.
Boulder, boulder.
Boulder, it's being stronger.
That's right.
This is one of those things that's going to dawn on me in the middle of the night. It's similar to something I was thinking of.
Okay, so I'll take out the word similar and change the spelling of Boulder.
It just looked like Jeff got sucked into the jet plane.
There he is. He's alive and well.
Can you hear what I'm saying?
Yep, ground control to Jeff.
Yes, all right, power restored. All right, is there a motion on the minutes?
I make a motion to accept the minutes amended.
Kathleen makes the motion.
I'll say.
For a second, Eileen seconds. And we'll go for a roll call vote. All right, Eileen?
I vote, yeah.
Okay, Eileen is yes. Don?
Yes.
Don is yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Kathleen is yes. Jim?
Is this a vote to approve the minutes?
Yes.
Then yes.
Jim is yes, and Jeff votes yes. Unanimous motion passes. Very good. Now, let me find our agenda again. Okay, and we're on to the financial report, which I have not looked at yet.
My lap, I'm sorry, but my laptop does not allow me to download Excel for some reason, so I can't see the Excel stuff. So I'll, I'll check it when I get home.
All right. Um, I guess I could share my screen if that's helpful.
Yeah, because I'm the only one, Jeff, and I'm, you know, we're going to be voting on much except the approval, so.
Okay. Is there any discussion or questions about the financials?
I guess I'll ask the Zoom charge. Is that an annual charge? That's 641?
Yeah, that would be a contractual. As long as we have Zoom, it's, we paid it for the, we pay the annual. You could pay monthly, but we pay for the annual.
Okay.
The annual fee. So it's a one-time charge for this year.
Okay.
But we expanded it to the webinar and so that we could have more people participate. So that was an extra cost, but we thought, we wanted to be able to do that, especially when we're collaborating with other libraries and doing authors. It allows more people to join.
Makes sense. So what's, what's the maximum attendance on that? Is it like 1,000 or something, or?
What, do you remember, Brad, is it 500 or, I think, I thought it was 500.
Yeah, so the, the webinar is, it comes with 100, and we had to add on the large meeting add-on, and it gives us 500, which we used for the Federer Parkman. We got over 300, so it was, was good.
Other questions about the report?
I'm good.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, Don makes the motion.
Oh, second.
Jim seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll do our vote then. Start with Eileen. How do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay, Don?
Yes.
Don votes yes. Kathleen? Kathleen is yes. Jim?
Yes, approve.
Jim is yes, and I vote yes. The motion is approved unanimously. Okay. Now, would we, we would be on to, doesn't say circulation, but isn't that next?
Yeah, that, I guess, we didn't add that on the agenda, but it usually goes along with the financial report, but it was an oversight.
Okay, so why don't we go to the library activity spreadsheet? Okay, August.
So the borrowing, we'll set back up to, close to February.
What do you mean, the circulation?
Yeah, it really is.
Not, not the circulation. What are you looking at?
Looking at loans so far.
Loans are fairly, fairly low compared to February, the February total, I believe, let's see, was 12,000.
I guess I was just looking at the internet, the interlibrary loans.
Oh, interlibrary loans, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, those, I could see where those would start to pick up. Because mainly, a lot of our business is through holds rather than browsing.
Right.
I've now moved on to the circulation tab. Yeah. Circulation is only half of January, February.
Oh, right. I see that now.
Children's is half as well. Okay.
We've added in curbside delivery numbers, and we've added in library on the lawn numbers, and then number of appointments. Those are just some new figures that we've added and that we're tracking.
For curbside, I think there was a very decent number, but is that specific visits by specific patrons every day? Like, because you know I go five times a week, so.
That, we total them daily. Is that correct, Gloria? We total them daily, so that's the total for the month.
Okay, that's good. I don't think that's bad at all.
The end, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's, compared to in-house appointments, people, I, they prefer curbside delivery at this point. It's convenient. And again, like, as you can see with the interlibrary loan, I'd say the majority of our business is generated through people who have put holds on material versus the people coming in to browse. It's much higher.
Do you get a sense that more, that people are using holds, you know, at home that have not used that capability before?
That I don't know. If more, if, I know, Eileen, that's the way you, you know, you use the library pretty consistently. There are, I always said, there's the people who put material on hold, and then there's the browsers. So it's hard to say if the browsers shifted to, to more of a whole type of a pattern. I can't really tell if they have.
I'm just wondering for future, for future services, I'll be honest with you, it's going to be hard to break the curbside habit if we ever get away from it.
You know, we talked about that, and we'd like to continue it in some format, obviously not at the level we're doing now, but I do think it has, I think it is a kind, a kind of, I think that's part, when you look at, I listened to that webinar this morning, Eileen, that you recommend, Publishers Weekly, and some of the good things that will come out of this and some of the new normal. And I think curbside service is a service that we should continue in some, in some way. We just have to figure out how to, how, the best to offer it once we open the doors and people are coming in and out on a regular basis. And it'd be great if we had a window, like, you know, where people could, like, drive up and we could give them their books.
Yeah.
I mean, if we could only do it that way, but I do think, especially parents with kids, if they could just come and pick up their books, elderly, you know, people who, you know, especially in the winter. So there's a lot of benefits, but we have to figure out the logistics. But I think that is one of the things that we've learned, how much people really like that, and, and how can we, given the configuration of our parking lot and our building, how could we continue it? And that, that's, that's what we have to figure out. But I do think, at some point, maybe on certain days, we do a certain hours. Obviously, maybe it's not done every day, but at least people will have that option. And I think that's something we really need to investigate.
Well, I think the possibility down the road of putting in an actual drive-up window and using Barbara Johnson funds for it, that that would.
Well, you should have been talking to Charlotte Wood this morning. She was asking me, she said, can you ask George if we can do it? I was like, to Charlotte, oh, whoa, and I said, it's not only public buildings, it's DPW, it's, it's a lot, but, yeah, so.
It's a, it's a project, but, but, yeah. Either that or let's move the library to a closed bank.
There you go.
There.
Yeah, that, hey, Eileen, you know, is there any banks that are?
Really thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, all good ideas, all good ideas. So that's something that I think, you know, you think about what you learn through adversity and some of the services that this new normal is going to be, we're going to be providing services in a different way. And some good, maybe, and, and the other thing, he says, that people who are, you know, been so shut up for so many months now are going to be, kind of, he used the word socially damaged in a way. If that was the right word to use, in that we're going to have to knit that people's feelings are coming together back and feeling comfortable coming back as, as a group. And that the library will probably pay or play a role in, in that process.
Oh, I think so for programs. I bet you most of the seniors who are, are feeling like cranky shut-ins are just like, oh, couldn't I just go to one library program with other people?
Yeah, so I, but I think the fear, getting over that, I think it's going to take a while. And what, and trying to get a certain level of comfort, and, you know, how will the library be able to invite them back and make them feel comfortable coming back? So it's going to be, it's going to be a process, I think.
What responses there to the opening for, for visits?
Have, have. I, I don't know if you want to vote to approve this, because I'll talk about that in my report.
Okay, sure.
We didn't want to go up, we kind of want, I don't know how we got off to, oh, curbside visits, yeah, that's how we got off topic a little bit.
Any other questions or discussion about the circulation report and the four tabs?
The, I guess one question I have is on the, on the tab with the activity for, you know, class visits, it's got some numbers in June. If I missed that last time, but I guess I'm just wondering what, what that was about.
That's a good question. I'm not sure what the answer is, what the.
I have no idea.
Yeah.
Is that Barbara? Barbara and Brittany, the school visits?
They're the only ones that do that, and I don't know if Brittany, there was no.
No, we didn't, we didn't have visits in June, so.
I'd have to.
Although they, they visit the light, the schools.
But not in June, there were, I think.
Sure, summer reading, right?
No, I don't think they did. But let me go back and look at their reports.
Maybe it was a Zoom visit.
Yeah, that could, yeah, you're right, it could have been a Zoom visit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Let me just see if I grabbed the wrong numbers.
We'll, we'll, we'll look into that, Jim. And let you know.
Any other discussion? Okay, is there a motion to approve the circulation report?
Mike motion to approve the circulation report as.
All right, Jim makes the motion. Is there a second? Don has seconded. Okay, the vote. Eileen, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Eileen votes yes. Don?
Yes.
Don votes yes. Kathleen? Kathleen votes yes. Jim?
Yes.
Jim votes yes, and Jeff votes yes. It's unanimous. Motion carries. Report is approved. All right, and now we're on to Tina's report.
So following up on Eileen's question about the visits, we, of course, you know, we have six, for, for the first floor, six people allowed to come in to browse, two for computers, and one family in the children's room at a time. And then we also have a slot for a teen, a teen person, someone in that demographic to meet with Brittany. The, and at any given day, none of the slots are completely full. It's, it's been lighter, I think, than we expected it to be. However, I think people who come in, they say, oh, it's so, you know, very appreciative. It's so good to be back in the library. It's so good. They're so thankful to be able to come in. And so I think it certainly was a good, I think the staff felt good to see people coming in, too. So I think it was mutual. But I would say that the library on the lawn and the curbside are stronger in terms of numbers in use of the library at this point. So I don't know, again, as more people get used to coming by appointment, it may go up. I think the other thing, it's a little bit, it's a little inconvenient to have to make an appointment before you come, so it's not like spontaneous. But we found, too, that most appointments are made the day of, not so much in advance. It's done in real time. Oftentimes, we will print out the appointments in the morning, and it's like, maybe you have a four by the end of the day, where Gloria is reprinting it and writing in people that are calling and, you know, making appointments. So it does seem to be that at least 50% of them, if not more, are done the day of. And Gloria and I, since given are the location of our offices, and we hear the knocking, and so we've been doing the morning shift between the two of us, and then in the afternoon, we'll, we'll pat it off to Brad and anybody else who's off the desk to take over. And then our evening circ staff, of course, our last visit is scheduled at six, so at seven. And now, especially with the dark, and also curbside, we're going to be looking at those hours as it's getting darker earlier. And also, since it's cooler out, we have the library on the lawn, still people are coming, but it's, it's, it's not as many. But I think Charlotte said she had about 20 today, even though I think today she did, she covered it this, this morning. And people love the, people love the library lawn, even people, when I've gone out there, they comment on how much they really like the library on the lawn. So that, that has worked really well. So we will continue with this system for the foreseeable future and see how it goes. But I, I think the software that we bought, that Brad set up for us, it's easy for us to use, the staff. And I think for patrons, it seems to be pretty easy for them to schedule their appointments. And it has good tracking software, so if someone doesn't come, we could just put that in, and it tracks no-shows as well. So it's a good, easy again to use, and I'm glad that we've, we found out about it and we implemented it. So that's working well. We even had people from other towns coming to library on the lawn. So I took a picture of a postcard from a library, my, my resident from Andover, Eileen. And she came and she sent us that card, how much she enjoyed our library on the lawn. So the next thing I wanted to talk about was the quarantine of library materials, and what happened with that. So right before I went on vacation, we began to receive these emails and regarding this new study that came out from the IMLS, which is the Institute Museum and Library Services. And they're working with this other, with this group called Realm, R-E-A-L-M, which is the reopening archives, libraries, and museums. It's a COVID-19 research project, and they do these studies that are particularly focusing on issues related to libraries and archives and museums. And so they did a study, and they found that the virus, after a certain number of days, longer than three, up to six to seven days on certain materials, the virus was still detectable. So the, is, is the emails with the directors was going back and forth. It was all over the map. Some already were doing seven days quarantine. Some were doing three and moving to seven. Some didn't know what they were going to do. So, you know, Charlotte and I discussed it, and, you know, Barbara, the children's librarian, right, for on vacation. And I said, you know, we've been deferring to Shelley Newhouse at the Board of Health for questions, whether it's, whether it's program questions, opening, you know, having a program outside or not. We always, you know, defer to her, and that's basically what the MBLC does, because they, they'd say, not, you know, every community is different, and also the, the rates are different in each community. So they didn't want to kind of say, this is the way you have to do it. So they kind of pushed it often. So when I asked Shelley, she first said, I'd like to read the study, and she did. And when she responded to me later in the day, she says she, based on, she likes to go with scientific-based evidence, and she says, go with the seven. So right before I went on vacation, you know, made the decision to go with the seven days quarantine. And then Charlotte, you know, posted it on Facebook with some of our patrons, including Eileen, had seen it, and questioned, you know, the rationale. So when I get back from vacation, I did email Shelley again, because I went back to the Board of Library Commissioners website to see if they had any further feedback on the study. And they, again, went back and says, you know, it's the virus, again, you know, considering it is primarily transmittable through the air. But, you know, and of course, all the things, precautions is, is certainly the social distancing, the mask. But there is also trying to do your due diligence with certainly your quarantine materials. And again, reiterate it, not one size fits all. And to certainly go with your community and guidance from your Board of Health. So I did email Shelley again and said that, you know, there was some concern about, you know, and I could certainly, yeah, people having to wait longer for those books returned to get them back into circ. You know, I certainly get it, because, you know, I have books on reserve, as, as all of you do, and waiting longer is, is certainly not a positive. So I did email her, again, MBLC's sort of thoughts on the matter, and she hasn't gotten back to me, which I know she must be pretty busy, because she usually does respond fairly quickly. So I'm waiting to hear back from her. So I do think that it's certainly open to discussion and to further analysis, whether to go back again to the three days. So I, I, but I think what we wanted, my take on this is that I, I wouldn't want to kind of go in the direction of negating a recommendation from the Board of Health. I do think it certainly makes sense to go back and sort of revisit it, though, with her. But I think that our plan needs to follow some consistent guidelines by somebody who is guiding our community. So, and that's basically, I think, what we, what you voted, when we, kind of, you gave the plan, the blessing, is to kind of go with the approval of the MBLC Board of Health and things like that. So, so that's where I'm at on it. A few, certainly I'm open to questions and comments. And I just wanted to let you know how we came to this decision and that I understand your concerns.
So I guess if it's okay, I'll go first, because I was pretty upset about it for a multitude of reasons. The first of which I must admit is my own self-interest, because I certainly don't want to wait a week on top of however long it takes to get a book from, you know, from an interlib. a book from, you know, from an interlibrary loan. And I did read the study. And I haven't read any of the studies that say anything like that. And so my first question was, how long the virus lives on an object or somewhere versus how it is transmitted? There was no discussion of that anywhere in that article. And then, secondly, there was the, that only applied to books that were stacked up. So my next question was, can't we stand the books up? And then it goes back to three days? And, you know, my third one was just that I think, you know, adding another week for everybody, not just me, based on one study that didn't deal with transmission at all, only dealt with how long some of the virus stayed on an object was. That study should not be the only consideration, especially since, you know, I looked at the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, I looked at the MBLC. I understand what you're saying, that they'll defer to local communities, but they didn't even put that study up. So, you know, I'm like, so that's where I'm coming from. And I still, you know, I still feel that way. At least I admitted that I'm being selfish.
No, I think, I think your feelings are probably shared by others as well, especially the avid readers and patrons. And I could get that. But I do think, and there are some that would say, you know, they want, you know, the caution on the side. So I understand that feeling. But I guess I would still like to hear, go back to Shelley and yet, and to see if I could have another discussion with her and see if we could take a second look at the study.
Is it logistically possible to stand the books on end rather than, rather than stack them?
No.
That apparently makes a three-day difference.
No.
Weird to me. Is it because the books are sandwiched on each other that there's a three or four-day difference? That I guess I had a hard time figuring out. Maybe air circulation, when you stand them up, is greater.
That's the way I thought of it, is that when there's air circulation on the open surfaces.
Right. But I talked to Charlotte actually today, you know, if the book's on the shelf, you know, if they're stacked, they're still close. It's just that they're stacked either vertically or horizontally, they're still stacked.
Same thing.
It's the same thing. And you really don't have the space to give that kind of, everything, to give that kind of space to everything. So I don't think that's real feasible, although we, I did think about the same thing as it would be and think we'd run into sort of a space issue. And the puppy be falling over anyway.
I guess something about children's books that are really thin, they're not going to stand up.
No, no.
Well, not paperback, but.
Yeah, that's, yes, that's. So, yeah. All legitimate points, Eileen. I can't argue them.
Is the goal of quarantining the books to quarantine, to sanitize the outside of the books? And the inside, are the insides not?
I think, I think the study was basically on the outside, because I don't think they went in and, you know, because you'd have to go through multiple pages. So my understanding is that it's the outside surfaces that are being studied. That's, that's my understanding. From what you read.
Sorry, go ahead.
Because they talked about cleaning. And they discourage the cleaning because of the damage to a book that any type of disinfection do to paper.
And cleaning with a light?
Pardon me?
With a light?
Violet.
Light. That, I didn't see any, any recommendation on the light or study on the light.
Samson wants to chime in here. He doesn't want to wait for the books either.
Brad, you didn't announce Kathleen's dog.
Well, sorry, he needs to be in the breakout room.
Yes, right.
You have to wait.
If I had to sneeze while I was reading a book, I wouldn't close it just so it'd hit the cover.
Yeah, you're right.
Well, and.
You know, I, I would think that, you know, the inside of the books are going to be picking up a fair amount of exposure to virus, bacteria, whatever. And always, really, too.
But, Don, I think that's a good point. And not only sneezing, I mean, I think, you know, sometimes people lick their fingers, turn a page. I mean, and that's all on the inside.
You know, my sense is that it's probably not any kind of realistic source of transmission. But I don't know that there's any science behind that, other than, you know, general of what we've heard, and that air transmission seems more likely than surface transmission. And I don't know, even though I'm frustrated that it's a week, I really struggle to come up with a rationale that says it should be shorter. If there's another study that comes out that says it's different, okay, well, we could pay attention to that. But it's really not practical to go and ultraviolet light all the pages. And I suppose you just have to wait.
One thing the MBLC said, there's no wrong answer. So in this, so the libraries that are staying with three, I don't, can't say they're wrong. And the library is moving to seven, I can't say they're right or wrong either. I do think it's sort of how cautious and are we going to follow our, these studies or not? And so it seems like they're continuing. And it's very, it's been very frustrating, because as even in our lives, this, everything, the guidance has changed.
Just not enough science that's ready yet.
Yeah. You know, again, we, back in March, we weren't wearing masks. Now everyone's wearing masks. And so, and now, and then, and then I was surprised to see this study, because the, what I was, I mean, I'm kind of frustrated by it, because everything we were getting, hearing was that the virus was transmitted by air, not by surface touching. So it was like, it seemed like the study contradicted everything that we had heard to that point. So it was almost, I had the tendency, I'll be honest, I'm just, forget this one. I mean, this is just some, you know, and then I've thought, okay, we got to pay attention to this. It's done by library people, you know, and this, this stuff, and everyone, and we're quarantining, and we have to do our due diligence and follow the studies that are people who are focusing on libraries. So, but I, I, it's frustrating when you're getting kind of almost contradictory reports on, from the science, and they're not all consistent.
And I mean, there is no, I haven't seen any transmission.
Yeah.
Studies from books. I mean, so, you know, virus staying and living is very different than virus getting transmitted. So.
Yeah.
But I, I'm sympathetic to your position, because you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't. So I, you know, I will support whatever you do, but I hope that we can go back to three days or so.
I think that's, that's very fair. And I think it's legitimate. You know, I think all your concerns are very legitimate. And I will, we will continue to monitor it. And again, I am going to have another conversation with Shelley about it. And she has, what, you know, again, we did this mostly through email. I do think we need to kind of look at the whole picture. And it is different. Like I said, you know, I don't know if I said it was, Westford has one of the highest circs in MBLC. They've been doing seven days from the get-go. I mean, they're just, they're, and their whole position on, on certain things has been a little bit more extreme, I will say, than what ours has been. So, so I do think, I think it's a little bit of what, and a lot of them, the Board of Health is calling the shots in most of these communities, too. So I think we have to kind of, I think, in this, I think we have to be, I think, more than anything, I'd like to be consistent with that part of the way we go forward, is that if we're going to ask a Board of Health for a recommendation, I think we need to follow it. And if, in retrospect, we think we should revisit it, then I need to revisit it with, with Board of Health. I think that's in order to sort of have some kind of guidance on how we proceed. But, and I will continue to do that. And certainly, and I've already sort of, sort of pointed out to her that about some of the pushback on the restriction of this decision and that it has some implications. And see if she, what she thinks. And she may, they say, do what you want. Or if you ask me, then why do you ask me if I'm not, you're not going to follow me? So I think we need to kind of, that would be my sense, in terms of at least the decision-making process. Because frankly, when we saw it, I thought, I'm not sure whether we should stay three days or seven days. I just, and I figured, you know, send her the report and get her take on it. And to her credit, she didn't answer me, right? She said, I'll need to read this report. I had not seen it. And then she, you know. So that's where it's at. So I will keep you posted. Okay. So I just wanted to move on then with my report. So our anti-racism programs, I would, you know, Brad could speak to that. I think they are, have been moving forward, and they've been very well received. I know Eileen and Brad participated. And I, I also watched the one with Dolores Johnson, which was awesome. And thank you for your kind email about Brad's ability to handle some of the questions, especially towards the end of the program. Got a little, he got some of the people go, I think, what would you call them?
Trolls.
Trolls. Right, trolls, there you go. But she was a wonderful program. And, oh, the one before that was the panel with Jen Bryson and Brittany and Melanie Patterson. I think that one also went very well. And then Brad, you did a movie, right, in August, which wasn't well attended, because some people thought they were going to watch it.
Yeah. Yeah, we watched, we talked about I Am Not Your Negro. And we had four people, and two didn't watch it, and two did watch it. But it was good. We had a really good discussion. And then we were going to be watching The Freedom Riders, not watching, discussing The Freedom Riders on this Friday. And I picked these because they're available either Hoopla or Canopy, so there's no waits. And so I think we've got like six or seven people registered. So we'll, we'll see how it goes. But, yeah, because we can't afford to broadcast it, because I don't even know what the license would look like if it was virtual. So I'm trying to make, make it clear in the, in the registration that it's just like a discussion of the documentary, not watching it.
I happened to watch it last night.
That's good.
Yeah. Yeah. I just had a little bit more to go and starting to get tired. But yeah, it's very well done. And it's amazing how many people were, who were in this documentary, were actually The Freedom Riders.
Yeah.
And that were interviewed, that actually participated. So it's, it's pretty amazing that they were there today to tell us about their experience. And at least, I don't know, Joe, was, who's this? Joe Lewis who just?
John Lewis.
John Lewis, yes.
It was like three, four years ago. So, I was not with us anymore, but he was when they filmed it.
Yeah, he was on, on the bus. So it was, yeah, so I highly recommend it. And then we did the, we're doing the Healthy Aging series has wrapped up. Charlotte did an awesome job. We did a lot with WCTV. And again, I have to commend the staff have become really expert interviewers and hosts on WCTV. So she did a couple of those. And so we wrapped up that grant. And Barbara, summer reading, again, pretty disappointing in terms of the numbers due to the COVID. So many of the kids who do participate, usually it's, you know, come to the library to sign up, because they, there's so many fun things going on at the library, which we just couldn't offer this year. But she also did a survey to try to get a sense of what parents want in terms of, from the library during this period, in terms of times of story time. And she found that, you know, a lot of them don't want their kids so much on the screen, because there's so much screen time with having to do, you know, especially during the, with the school session. And she's going, but a lot of them, especially the younger parents, would be interested in some outside story time. So she's been, I think she's going to go to N Tile and do a couple of the, some outside story times. The parents, the young children seem to want that. And I think the older ones, they want more sort of activity type of things that they can do. Maybe they could show, you know, show what they did on Zoom, but a little bit more activity type based programs, rather than just looking at, looking at a screen. So she's trying to follow up with, with some of the results from that survey. And then going forward, we're up, you know, one of the things that library, MBLC and ALA are, and it's actually in our action plan, is voter engagement, and trying to really get people, the awareness of the importance of voting. So, and Brittany is really has been, Tuttle has really been leading the way on this one. She has actually wanted to do this for freedoms. I sent you the link that Waldem Library has done, where she's going to have teams put down what they would want to have, ask for if they could vote. And she's going to be pre-registering, because you can register before you're 18. And we're also going to have, working with the town clerk to register other people on next Tuesday. And so, you know, and also, she has, I let Jeff Hall know about this thing, this for freedoms, because all of a sudden, I didn't want all these signs to appear on the front of the library line. And so she's been in touch with Jeff Hall. I was, and then had put them, then they both have started to communicate, because he had some questions about the project. And he invited her to come to a selectmen's meeting as well to talk about it. So I think it's been, so far, you know, I think he's on board. And I think, again, I think she's really excited about some of the things that she's going to be doing. And she's going to be working with Erin, our adult services librarian, also to get, you know, other people vote, register to vote. And then in addition to that, our new marketing librarian had an idea. She has a background in TV. So she has been videotaping the staff, asking them, when was the first time you voted in the presidential election? So I got to go way, way back in time. And, and so it was, she's starting to work on that. And I think it's just sort of, we find that when we put staff on Facebook, and just, it's more than anything is to get people to think about voting. And what surprised me, I was listening to a podcast when I was walking yesterday, and the topic was, is why people don't vote. And it, there was some people who just thought it wasn't, what's the point? Because of gerrymandering, it doesn't, their vote doesn't matter. Electoral college, that, you know, it doesn't matter that way. I'm too busy. And it, there was a lot of reasons. So I do think what we'd like to do, as a library, is to sort of just get it on people's radar screen as much as possible. That vote, you know, the voting is coming up, register to vote. And I think there's a big push in a lot of levels. But anyway, and then we have, we tried, I know Charlotte tried to get a couple of programs, like on the, on the electoral college, and wasn't able to find any speaker. So she's found a program about us, Sex with the President. So that's, that's just a lot more fun. So the ins and outs of love and.
A lot more inviting than the electoral.
College, yes. So I'm sure we'll probably have a lot of people on that one. And then another one on the Constitution, George Washington speaks on the Constitution. So again, we're staying apolitical, you know, just a little bit about the history of voting, about the importance of voting, and the whole, you know, whole concept of democracy and voting. And just, so that's, that's where we're focusing in our upcoming programs. And then with the building, I don't know if you saw the, the front of the building, we had some, National Grid was working. That was to tie in the library into the gas line, because when they replaced the boiler last year, it's a dual boiler. It hits oil and gas. So when the tank is empty, that is full of oil right now, they'll, they'll switch over to the gas. But at this point, there's no point in trying to empty a tank that's full. So George is waiting until he can remove the tank, an empty tank, rather than a full tank. And then they'll switch over to the gas. Our first floor, the room is going to be installed October 13, 14, and 15. The new room, we're on the first floor. That's on schedule. And then the Peggy Kane Reading Garden, we, the plaque is on this, on the boulder, on the stone. And, and I didn't take a picture of it. So hopefully, you could all come by and see it on Tuesday. No, excuse me, Saturday, at 1:00. I reached out to Peggy's daughter, Stacy, to invite her and her family to come. And since we can't gather in large groups, we're going to focus on having the trustees there, and the forensic executive board, and Peggy's family. I think that certainly keeps us within the, certainly the numbers that are allowed in terms of gathering. And we're just going to, I think Jeff, Ann, and I will just sort of say a few words. And anybody else who wanted to make any comments, it's going to be very brief, I think, and informal. But I think we need, I think it will be nice. It's supposed to be a beautiful day to honor Peggy, and with, sort of in a more formal, informal way, on Saturday at 1:00. So I hope you all can make it.
I'll be there. And I already took a look at the plaque in the boulder. It's very nice.
Yep. Yeah. It just sort of just blends right in, I think, very nicely. Yeah.
And I'll just mention, I won't be there. I'll be out of town.
Okay.
I will be there.
Great, great. Don and Kathleen, are you able to make it?
I'll be out of town as well.
I'll be out of town as well.
I cannot make it. I have an event, I have an event to go to, another event, sorry, to go to.
Okay. All right. Well, Eileen and Jim, I mean Jeff, okay, that's good. So now the frog. Good news is they can't secure it, Eileen. I know you were concerned about. There are, they, they have this method where they put some kind of a, oh, screws in and you put them in the ground and you put cement in and it's not movable. So that's the good news. And so I had been back when I was talking to him, it was right after our meeting. And I just, I said that, you know, I really couldn't go forward and order anything until I had any approval. So it had to wait until September. And there was my, I emailed him about the meeting today and he says, there's one frog available. And the turtle wasn't available, but he could get it by November. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, the turtle wasn't on the, on, we didn't discuss the turtle. So when I went back, we looked at the collection again. And again, we found a turtle and I thought, well, maybe buy two things. Again, if you thought that that was appropriate, because it's, we're talking again about wetlands. And he gave us a good deal. If we wanted to buy both.
Does the turtle have any books on it or anything? Or is it just?
Turtle does not have books on it. So only the frog has a book. There was another frog with the book, but I didn't really kind of like it. I mean, because I thought one frog was enough anyway. And when I thought a turtle kind of mixed it up a little bit. So that, we're saving $2,550 if we bought both. My only concern now is we're getting into the fall and we'll be, we're receiving them when it's colder and people wouldn't be using the, the space as much. So that would, I was a little leery about that. That was, and you know, whether, my question would be whether to wait till spring. I don't know if he'll, he'll still offer us this deal and if you want to buy both or not, or just the frog. So that's up for discussion.
So I guess I had a couple of thoughts. What I liked about the turtle is that it's climbable.
Yeah.
What I like about the frog is that it's reading. And I looked for the connection between the turtle and reading, and I struggled there.
Well, I think the connection is not with the turtle, is the wetlands.
I understand. Also, what I liked about the turtle is it looked maybe a little more durable. That the, sorry, yeah, the frog, I was a little worried about maybe fingers and glasses and other small features that somebody may hang on or pull on and it might eventually break off. It's very cute. I kind of wish there was a reading connection with the turtle that the sculpture could also be climbed on and would be durable and would have the reading connection.
You could put a book in front of it. Of a book.
But only after it had been quarantined for a little bit.
Yeah.
Well, maybe it's a slow reader. Slow to the party.
It's funny that, you know.
Is the frog climbable?
You know, I think, I think it is. No, not the frog. I think the turtle's climbable, looks climbable. But you know.
Didn't really.
The lions in front of the New York Public Library had masks, put masks.
Yes, I saw that.
Yeah, masks on the, on these statues.
I, I like Jeff's take on, because I, first I was just thinking about the turtle and why is it there? But then I thought about climbability. And if you can't climb on the frog, and as much as I don't want to spend the money, I love, I have a mental picture of like little kids just, you know, having a blast out there and with both of them. And I don't know, I kind of, I'm, I'm caught between just wanting the frog and wanting both. But I would like either one. I mean, I, I think either one would be great to put out there.
I, my personally, if we were only going to get one, I'd get the frog with the book because of the reading. And because it has both, it has the connection to the wetlands as a frog. And it does both. And it has the book. Where, where, like you said, the, the turtle is, is connected as a climbable, but it's, it has, it is connected to the wetlands adjacent to them. But it doesn't have the reading component.
Trying to count the children. I see one on the frog's head and I see one at the frog's feet. And I'm not sure if there's any more. But I, yeah, the first time I looked at it, I missed the little frogs. And I like that. I like that the kids are there in the picture.
So if you look at it, if we just get the frog, it's without anything, it's going to be 7,000 plus to 350, so $7,350 for just the one. And if you got both, it's really not, it's really not that much more money when you think about it, right? Just a thought.
Is there a place for both?
I think, Dawn, I think what I was thinking that next year, we will remove one of the, out of the rain barrels. I think the one closest to the, to Peggy's stone. And I was thinking of putting maybe the frog there. And then the, I'd put the turtle out of the sun so it doesn't get hot, maybe in the shade on the other side. And only keep one rain barrel, barrel there. I think I would, because I think one of them, one of them is yours, correct? And one of them I bought, one of them you own anyway. Think you gave me one of yours. So that's where I, that's in my vision where I would put the, I think I would put the frog closer to where the run rain barrel is near Peggy's, the stone in the plaque. And then on the other side, I think I would keep the turtle out of the sun so it wouldn't get hot if kids were sitting on it. Because it's pretty shady on the other side of the reading garden, almost all day.
You'd need something underneath the turtle to bolt it down to. I mean, you can't just sort of sit it in the mulch.
Okay. There was a way, the way he described the brackets and hardware, that it could either go into cement or into the ground. You know, into the cement, they don't have, they would probably just drill in. But if it went into the mulch, I think they have to, they would probably have to put some cement into that. But maybe, is that a wetlands thing then? I probably couldn't, maybe I wouldn't be able to touch it. I don't know. I don't think it's, would be, have any impact.
If it was.
You, could you, again, if you're unsure of it and you're getting a good deal, could you put the turtle inside?
Oh, I don't think we have room for it. No. No, I think, you think it's appeal is, is as a part of the garden.
I just figured out if you buy both of them for $91.50, the turtle only costs $1,800.
Personally, I'm not in a hurry. So it doesn't bother me that it wouldn't be available until November or later. And maybe later is the spring. I feel like I need to be convinced that there's room for both. And I guess I could be persuaded if there is room for both.
You want to, you're coming on Saturday, correct? So you want to take?
I would, I would.
Would that help?
Probably.
Well, do you want to wait to take a vote on this until another meeting?
Does anybody else have, have questions? The other question I had was whether the vendor has had any complaints on the frog about pieces being broken off.
He did not indicate, I didn't ask specifically, but.
Yeah, maybe ask that question.
Is there a warranty on them?
I don't know that answer either.
I think that would be good to know, too.
I'm not. To the insurance policy?
Pardon me.
Can we add it to the town's insurance policy?
I think that since, I don't think, I don't see the point of rushing to get it in before the cold weather starts. Maybe ask him if, what the prices would be if we ordered it like in February, install in the spring or something like that.
Yeah, I don't know if the, if the, he's offered this good deal, but you know, usually, you know, good for 90, good for 30 days or something, one of those or not. I mean.
We also have any turtles on hand, so.
Yeah, right. The turtles would have to be ordered. And he only had one frog.
Right.
And it's, that's in production. So it seems to me they don't keep them in stock until somebody orders at times. I think because of the cost probably to produce them. So they get the order. So and they make, then they produce them. That's, sounds like that.
What are they made out of, Tina?
I saw these at PLA, they're, I don't know.
I'm on the website now. Some of them explicitly mentioned bronze. Others don't say anything.
No. They're, they're very heavy. Very nice. But for that price, it should be nice, but.
If it's the Prince Charming convertible, it could be gold, you know? Melted down later.
So I guess I have two questions. So what are the dimensions or the weights of these statues we're talking about?
Well, I don't.
Three feet high, six feet high.
Do you have the, in front of you, Jeff?
Um, not at the moment. I'm looking through and I'll let you know if I find it.
And I guess my other question then is, is this being paid with the state aid money?
No, we were going to do this with Barbara Johnson. That was my recommendation.
Okay. The frog is 31 inches tall. And I haven't found a weight.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing a weight there. He might've told me that when we were talking, but I don't recall. But.
I'm looking up the turtle. There's a lot of turtles.
Can you share your screen?
I could share the screen. I haven't found, maybe that's the turtle. Yes, that's the turtle. Okay. So let me share. And okay. Looks like there are several pictures. So the turtle is 40 inches long and 26 inches tall. Says that the turtle is bronze. Can be tubed to a fountain. I guess that means it would spout some water. And whoops, other pictures.
And that's the one I put in my report. That was, it's funny, there's a.
They don't look exactly the same, do they?
They don't. No, they all look different, don't they?
Yeah.
But I think it's the same one, isn't it? Just different pictures.
I assume so.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't know if it's a different, just a different photograph or maybe they're all one of a kind and they're all one of a kind.
Yeah. I think it's, I think it's just different, a different photograph or different perspective.
That's all the information that there was.
Yeah, it's funny, they don't put down a weight.
Okay. All right. I'll stop sharing. I guess.
Is, do you want to vote on funding this now? Or you want to hold on? Do you want to table it to the next meeting? Because I think the question is, number one, do you want to buy just the frog? And because we're getting a good deal, buy both. And when do you want to, do you want to vote to spend that money? Or do you want to hold off until you check out the space?
I'll just offer this as, as an opinion, which is, I guess I'd like to look at the space and I'd also like to hear back from the vendor. If they get any complaints about broken fingers and eyeglasses for that frog. Because it looked like it could be fragile and I'm imagining kids hanging from it and pushing on it and so forth. Or maybe, you know, do they not recommend it where kids are going to do that?
Yeah. I don't think this is like at the N Tile playground either. I mean, there, there are kids out there, but I don't see this as a playground space. I think it will be attractive. I think if kids, obviously if there's a turtle there and the mother's there, they're having lunch. They, the kids might crawl on the turtle. But if this is, it's not a playground. It's a reading garden. So I, I guess my, I'm not overly concerned personally.
Everything's a playground.
Yeah. Oh, an accident can happen everywhere, but I think you increases the chance if this was in the middle of a playground, I think your risk.
Okay.
So I think that, again, I just don't think it's, it's this kind of an environment where the focus is to play. The focus is sort of to have, and I get, if there were small kids and the mom having lunch, sure, I think they'd go and they'd touch it and they'd be around and all that. But I will ask, and I will ask about the warranty.
Okay.
And then, so I will tell them that you want to reevaluate the space. And whether this price, how long is this price good for? I think that would be the other question.
Sounds good.
Okay, sounds like a plan?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
And sorry, I just, I just, I guess I want to review the Barbara Johnson directions or instructions we got with the bequest related to, you know. I guess what, what the directive was with that, with that bequest. And I guess I'm wondering about using state aid money versus Barbara Johnson funds.
I don't think there were any guidelines on the Barbara Johnson fund at all in, in, in the bequest. I think what we thought as trustees, when you, when you took the vote was to use it to enhance the library, which was a pretty broad vote.
Yeah.
So I think it's at your discretion.
I think that's right. Personally, I don't have any objection to using the Barbara Johnson money for this.
Well, I guess I would ask, why use the Barbara Johnson money versus the state aid money? If the state aid money is at, you know, 42 grand.
Other than we used a chunk of the state aid money for the first floor. First floor room.
No, the Barbara Johnson money is for the first floor.
That was the Barbara Johnson money?
We used the, you voted for the staff room.
Staff room, thank you, thank you.
And I think, I think your reasoning, if I recall, was that you wanted it to be a.
That the public would see.
Public would see.
Yeah.
And I think that this falls into sort of that category. I guess for me, you know, I think state aid is, is a functional, I look at that as, in essence, another thing, even like with Friends money, I always like it to be visible. And I think the Barbara Johnson money, we wanted, we want to be able to point to it. And I remember when we did insulation of the walls between the Banda Room and the conference room, I think we used state aid money because we figured, you know, that was sort of, just sort of things that people wouldn't see, but utilitarian. But we really had a, it's kind of like, okay, you have to, in your house. I know I did my kitchen last year. Finally, I could say, oh, wow, you could see the money. But when I had it before, I had to buy a boiler and then I had to do the insulation, you know, nobody could see that. And I think that's what I look at state aid money for. These are things we have to do. The town's not funding it, but we want to make things better. And we use state aid money. And it's state aid is like, almost like an emergency fund too. Like, okay, we didn't have any money. Like, okay, we didn't have any money budgeted for Zoom and contractual. So we were able to, you know, use our state aid money for that. So it's, it's a nice cushion to have. When something comes up unexpectedly, like, you know, you can't really point to Zoom and say that the public, oh, look at, we have Zoom. It's, it's a functional use. And state aid is kind of nice to have to pay for those things. But when it's something that you could point to and say, and to the public, we used the trust fund to buy this. This is, this, we've made this room. We've got these two new, I have an office and then a room with the Barbara Johnson money and it's, it's, I think it's, it's visible stuff. And I try to do that with the friends too, so that people want to give and, and, and people can see what, what you've spent it on. Does that make sense?
That's a good argument.
Okay. So Tina, do you want to continue then?
Okay, so we holding off on this vote?
Anybody that wants to vote on it tonight or rather hold off?
I think we should wait to get the answers from the vendor. And then vote next, vote and decide next month, especially that whether we can postpone till the spring. Okay. So just some information on personnel. We have our Ellen, as I noted, or has, our new marketing librarian has hit the ground running, is, is doing a nice job. And I talked to Barbara Robb this morning, this afternoon. I had, and Nicole had just started a couple of days before I went on vacation and she's very pleased with the work she's done. Very creative, very energetic, and she's really happy about that.
Right.
We had two, two good hires. And. The day I went on vacation, Charlotte called me and said, Linda put in a retirement letter, letter. I, which, yeah, so I, I sort of kind of expected it. Cause you know, Linda had sort of been saying that, you know, she'd come back from her vacation and, you know, you know, the whole, everything's different now and, you know, not seeing patrons. And I think she, retirement was on her mind, maybe on a few months, but I think she moved it up, just wanting to, you know, I think she misses the things that she enjoys about the job. And she just decided that she wanted to retire while the weather was still nice and be able to do some things that she had been looking forward to doing. So she moved up her calendar, which. She, her last day is next Tuesday. So okay, just seems like she's gonna be taking her vacation time. So she's, I think Jeff Hall will be coming by with the retirement apple on next Tuesday, week from today, to present it to her. And we can't really do a, a, a big party because of the COVID, but we will try to, you know, honor her in an appropriate way on her last day. Can we have an outside drive-by again? That was nice.
Oh, a drive-by. Oh, I did. I didn't, I didn't, we'll have to see. I don't, I don't know. You know, it's funny because I asked, I, I'm not sure Linda would want that, only because I asked her. If she, I wanted her picture taken, because I wanted to put it on Facebook and put it in the newsletter and she, she said she did not want her picture. So I, I, you know, everybody's a little different. And she said, you could announce it that I'm retiring, but not, but not with my picture. So I'm, I'm not sure Lynn, Linda would want the drive-by, but I will tell her that you suggested it, Eileen.
All right. And in any case, I can, I can, we can send her emails and stuff.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, that would be nice if something from each of you would be, I think she, I think she would really appreciate that.
Is she working Saturday?
I don't believe so. Who's, no, no.
Okay.
So you could email her. She works Wednesday evenings if anybody with Brad, she works Wednesday evenings. So anyway, the job has been posted internally and the town manager's office. It's on the town's website and they sent it to the apple. I have not posted it on the MBLC board. Because I have an internal candidate who I'm going to be speaking with tomorrow. So I want to give sort of a nod to this person. Who's very qualified and I'm going to, Charlotte and I are going to be speaking with this person tomorrow. So I want to wait and see, to see how everything, how things go forward with that before I, if, if and when I, I need to. Go any further than, than this. So I would kind of please just, again, maybe things will just continue to go smoothly when we can move people around. It's always nice. So, oh, so anyway, a couple of things. I, I attached the FY twenty action plan and with the notes. I don't think, unless you have questions, and a lot of the things on it were postponed or canceled due to the COVID. And then, but a lot of things we were, we did do too. So it's, I'd say, probably did more things than we didn't do it because, but again, as you could see, some things were not done due to COVID. But I think, in interest of time, you, I don't think we, I don't think you want to go through each action item, but.
I, I would just mention that one of the blocks is blank. Nothing at all written in it.
Yeah, I think I noticed it. I will take a look.
The only one, yeah. You just may want to say something.
Okay, we'll take a second look at that. You have an eagle eye this time. Don, you're picking up a lot of things.
Pick up on blanks.
Um, and then I, do you remember when we were having those first amendment audits, that we have people visiting libraries with cameras? We realized then that we needed to update our video photography policy. In order to kind of cover ourselves, that we would make sure if someone did come in, how we would handle it. So I looked at a couple of different policies online from other libraries and developed the one I sent to you. So that, you know, certainly we, as a public forum, a public place, we have to allow people in, but we, but they cannot be disruptive. And there are certain places, certainly they can't go into offices and they cannot impact the operation. So we just needed to put that into writing. So certainly after COVID, you know, and I don't know, you know, they kind of, we haven't seen anybody, but for a while there, it seems like they, these, I don't know if it was one person or a few, they were making the rounds. But it wasn't only in Massachusetts. These things that they were happening, because ALA had a, put out a statement as well on it. So I think they were doing them. All of a sudden, there was this sort of this trend of our first amendment audit. So that, this, so we, our photography and video policy was kind of dated anyway. So there was an opportunity to kind of just totally kind of revise it and, and, and address some of the issues. So.
You know, I had a question, Tina, about the policy. And I got the impression that if you were not a staff person who is. Doing some photography, that you could take pictures of patrons if you were respectful, whatever that means. Whereas if you were a library staff person taking a picture of, of patrons, you would give them the option of being photographed or not.
Right, right.
So there, there's a difference in treatment. That was intentional.
Um, I think.
Versus outside media.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I think, well, if someone from like the press came, I think they would, we would ask them to contact, you know, us. And because they would be in more, it would be more official. But I'm, I think this addresses, like if you came in, if, say you were visiting a library on one of your visits on vacation. And you want to take some pictures inside the library, you would be allowed to do that as long as you weren't being disruptive. And that's basically, I think, what we're saying. But like at programs, we all usually will, you know, again, I covered that in the last paragraph. We often take programs, it's a public space. And if someone said, don't, please don't take my picture, we respect that. And if it's children, we often ask parents, you know, is it okay if we, usually, especially if I go upstairs and I see a really nice picture of a parent and a child reading, I'll say, is it okay if I take a picture? Can we use them on Facebook? I would, you know, just because we're the staff and we're, we're nice. And these people who are doing the first amendment audit, we don't want to infringe on their first amendment rights, but we also don't, we also want to make sure that they are not disruptive. And, and they do not, and they, and they should not get in someone's face or go up to somebody. And that's what this is. You do not bother patrons. And I think that's what we're saying, you know, from afar, if you want to take a picture. But if that person doesn't want their picture taken, then, you know, they could say that. But again, I think what happens in these. You do give up a certain level of privacy when you enter a public space. And I think that's another purpose of this, is to put you, the patron, on alert. That as you enter a public space, that you could have, end up having your picture taken because you're in a public space. And that's why the first amendment audits were illegal.
All right, just to, just to make, make sure I understand. So if you were a patron and someone, you know, say from the local paper came in. And looked like they were going to take a picture of everyone at your table. Could you just say, I don't want my picture taken? And would they have to? Pass, pass by the table or take the shot without your picture?
I would.
Is, is that the respectful part?
I think so. I would say that would be the respectful part.
Okay.
Are you respecting someone's request?
Yeah.
That would be my interpretation. Please don't take my picture.
Okay.
Or you get up and, or, you know, or you move or you leave, but you would say, please, I don't want my picture taken.
Yep, okay.
Okay. Tina, is that it all for your report?
That's it.
Okay, I think I had a question or two. I just want to scroll back a little bit.
Does that have to be voted on?
We need to vote on this if you approve this policy.
And do you need to vote on the action plan?
Uh, no, no, because that, that has already been submitted to board of library commissioners. No, that's just for their information.
All right. Then for the photography policy, does anybody have any other questions or discussion? Is there a motion to approve the policy as presented? Eileen, Eileen makes the motion. For a second. Kathleen seconds. Roll call vote, Eileen.
Yes.
Eileen votes yes. Don?
Yes.
Don votes yes. Jim?
Yes.
Jim votes yes. Kathleen? Kathleen votes yes and Jeff votes yes as well. Passes unanimously. Tina, if I may, I had a question or two on your report, a couple of things. So library on the lawn. So I haven't been to that myself, while I have been to the bookstore openings on the lawn. And that's proving to be, for the bookstore, a lot of work to haul all the books out. And now they're reconfiguring a little bit where some of the books will be viewed indoors by very, very small crowds. I'm just wondering how it's working out on the lawn and just exactly what are you doing? How many, how many carts or what are you doing?
Well, Erin's been doing the Tuesday morning and Lori was, Vicky's been doing the Thursday evening. And it's basically, seems like they have a good system going. The children's books, the children's staff bring down the children's materials down on the elevator on carts and they put some tables out. And they handled the bringing and they have, you know, some of the prizes the kids picked up there. The, and then we use those red carts that we have and they, Erin or Lori just fill them up, especially with mainly new materials, new things that have come in. They just fill them up and they put some DVDs on and just roll them out in the wheel. So we don't have, it, I think, I think this might be easier than the bookstores because they're carrying boxes out of books. We just put them on the carts and can roll them right out where they have, they have those steps to navigate.
Yeah.
And so to me, it's, they, they, they pretty much roll it out in five to 10 minutes and then roll it back in within five to 10 minutes. It's, it's like I go out and like by two minutes after 12, everything was in the other day. So they're pretty quick and efficient. So yes, I, it's, it's not labor intensive of getting the things in and out for us. I think it is much more for the bookstore.
Okay. Seems like you've always had good weather.
Uh, we've had a cancel the evening, library on the lawn, maybe twice with Gloria. Was it a few or do you remember maybe twice we've had a cancel because of, you know, evening thunderstorms? And then last week we canceled, I think it was the funeral for the state trooper. We had, so, so. Yeah, so I think, I don't think we've had a cancel any morning ones, but I think we've canceled at least two or three maybe of the evening ones because of the weather.
And looking at the anti-racism programs. So the ones that you mentioned here, I was at both of those. And I, I guess I couldn't tell while I was there how many people had attended than I saw in your report, thirty-six for the panel and thirty-one for Dolores Johnson. And Dolores Johnson was jointly with Andover. And, and still only thirty-one. I, I felt a little disappointed about that and wondered what you thought and if you were. If you were disappointed and if you were going to try to, I don't know, market it any differently or.
Yeah, with two libraries advertising, that, that does probably seem a little low, but I, and we don't get the same numbers on Zoom usually than we get. If they were certainly in the library. On the other hand, and, and you know, I think she was wonderful, but I think too, I think these, it may be a little bit of more of a. No, she's not as well known as sort of Frederick Bachmann was when Brad did that with Bill Rickett and Tuck's Ferry, where the, his, he sort of, he's internationally known. And so that could be a, a little bit and of an issue, you know, she, I think as her, her book now is, is, I, I noticed that because I'm talking about it at my book discussion. And I went online to look at some of the reviews. So I think it's getting some traction now and I noticed a lot, it's like there's a lot of holds on her book, but I think it was just beginning to get some interest. So sometimes that makes a, a difference in, in, in the numbers as to how much the book has been marketed. Uh, by the publisher and where, where it's being reviewed. So.
Can I mention also that it's on Facebook and I watched the Dolores Johnson on Facebook and totally enjoyed it, but I wasn't there live.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we don't get those counts. At le, at least board library commissioners, we, just for you know, for statistics, we can only count live attendees. So when people watch it again on Facebook, those are numbers of interest to us because, and we can, we see those numbers, correct Brad? Brad, we see the number of, of views on Facebook.
I encourage you to report those, even, even if it doesn't count for the state, I'd encourage you to.
Yeah.
Share it with us and others.
Yeah, so, I don't know. So I don't know, do you know uphand, Brad, how many views approximately she may have gotten?
So I, I looked at, so we uploaded it to YouTube too, and it's been a hundred and fifty-one views.
Wow.
Um, so it's, it's moving. I'm trying to see if I can find the YouTube, the Facebook live video. I. Don't see it for some reason. But so, I mean, it's, my feeling for this whole series is, yeah, I've been disappointed by the turnout, but it's kind of a long game. Because we're, it's, it's, there's a lot to do. So I think that, I think that making the inroads is worth it, even if the numbers aren't where we want them to be. And the fact that we can archive them and have people watch it whenever, it has a lot of value. But. Well, we'll have to, I mean, it'll be interesting to see when we get to like February, you know, we have a nationally and years, decades long established Black History Month. And so if we've rolled out some more of these kind of programming, will, will there be more then? I don't know. I don't know. But it's worth, it's worth, it's definitely worth trying. So we'll, we'll see. We got a couple more months.
So one of the things I might like to understand is, I have to say that I go to a library program and it might be filmed. But maybe I'm not paying that much attention to the filming. And I tend not to watch WCTV. So in my mind, I wasn't counting any of that before or currently. And so you've woken me up to that a little bit. And I'm just, I'm curious how many views we get. By online and wherever else it might be listed.
The other thing we don't know is, am I correct, Brad? If, if someone views it, if they view the whole program, we, it's counted.
Yeah, you do, you get that.
Or one hour. Is that correct?
For YouTube, you do get the percentage viewed.
Of the percentage viewed, okay.
Mm-hmm.
But not on Facebook?
No.
No, okay.
Okay. That's all I had for questions. Let's back to the agenda. There we are.
Oh, did you know, one other thing I wanted to talk about, Jeff, I forgot about future meetings?
Yes.
Okay. We have, Jeff Hall had emailed us to talk with our boards and commissions about whether we wanted to continue Zoom. or do in-person meetings. But I had a discussion with him about doing, and Gloria and I looked at the space on the first floor, the quiet study area. And we thought that could, initially, we thought it might be feasible to set up for the six trustees and for Gloria and me, which would be eight, because it's eight people for that per thousand square feet. And we figured, you know, we had a few attendees. But a couple of things, it would, we would have to stay six feet apart. We would have to wear masks. And probably after looking at that space, thinking that it probably would not accommodate much, many more people, maybe a one or two. Because it's, it's probably only about 1,000 square feet of that. And, and I also forgot that in the next meeting, the, that space, the new room will be there. So that takes away some more square footage that we could count for social distancing. So I guess what I'm saying is I don't think we have the space to accommodate an in-person meeting and stay with the required social distancing rules.
I was afraid of that.
What were you going to say, Gloria?
It's hard to hear if you're six feet away and you're.
Yeah.
And with masks on.
I was afraid of that. And I don't know what thought you've had about using the conference room on the second floor. Or is that all full of returned books?
That's where all the quarantine books are.
Hazardous returned books.
Yes. I don't think, yeah, I'm not quite sure I would recommend that.
Okay. So for right now, you don't have the space. And I'm not sure if, if those are the reasons, I'm not sure we have a plan to get there.
Yeah.
Unless the rules change.
I agree. I, I think we're going to have to continue this until we have in-person. Until we could really have a legitimate, you know, meeting where we can invite, invite people that you don't have to be six feet apart.
Okay.
That's, that would be what I would suggest. Even though, even though we may not get any attendees, I think legally we have to allow them to come and have a space to allow them to come.
Okay. Other feedback from the trustees?
About this or anything else, Jeff?
Well, I was thinking of this subject.
Meeting in person, Eileen wouldn't have been able to be here.
That's true.
Nor Don, nor Don.
Or is it, can you do a hybrid? Can you have three trustees out of an in-person meeting and three V's in?
I tried to do a hybrid with my book discussion group and it did not go well.
No.
Couldn't say that to any parent of small children. They'd come through the screen and smack you on.
Yeah, everybody would have to have a GoPro on. So wherever you move, everybody could see.
Right. Okay. Then that looks like next on the agenda. So Tina, are we finished talking about the reading garden update? Or was there more?
No, there's, that's it.
Okay. And we've covered the photography policy. Looks like we're on the section for public comments, Brad.
It's just us.
Just us. Okay.
People don't know what they're missing.
That's right.
We should put a plant or somebody to come in.
I can, I can loan you some of the Conservation Commission, our remote viewers, if you'd like.
I don't think so, Don. I don't think.
Certain stream team members might be interesting to have as guests.
Well, then shall we go around the room for trustee comments? Don, would you like to go first?
Sure, I have no comment.
Okay.
Wallpaper, Don. That wallpaper is wild. Is that like original to the house?
No, it's an upstairs room. It's sort of Oriental looking.
It's fantastic.
Don, are you in Maine?
No, I'm here in, I'm here in Wilmington.
Okay.
I love.
I'll go in a few days, but yeah.
Kathleen, do you have any comments?
I have more of a question. Maybe, maybe I'll start with a comment. I have a client who's a grandmother of young children and she has been raising these young children for a couple of years. And she attempted to get them a library card at her local library and they refused her because she's not their legal guardian or custodian. And I don't know what Wilmington's policy is, but do we allow people who aren't parents of children to get a library card for children or do we limit it just to the parents?
I would say we would be flexible. I think it does say in the policy, certainly legal guardian or, so parent or legal guardian. But I think, and I think we try to be flexible in these cases. I, I think in order for the, for the child to get the card, that would be my, I think that's what I would expect that Barbara would do. That we wouldn't be a hard and fast rule if they were, especially if they were living with the.
Right, same address. So.
I, I, to me, if, if Barbara deferred to me, I would say give them the card.
Right, right. Why would you discourage it? Was my comment, but anyway, thank you. That's my comment, question.
Do you think if they, if she went to or called the library director, maybe that would help?
I almost did it. But yes, I have encouraged her to do that. Yes.
Because that's, I just think that's sad. What do they gain by, you know, by excluding the children?
Yeah.
Right. And there are so many grandparents in that situation.
Yeah.
And not even just grandparents, aunts, uncles that are taking custody of children whose parents are unfortunately unable to parent. But I agree with you. There's nothing gained by that.
Um, further comments? Jim, do you have anything?
No comments.
All right. Eileen?
I do. And this is about a subject that is dear to my heart. I don't know how many of you, I, Jeff, you, I know Brad, Tina, knew Keith West, who was our wonderful moderator at the Great Decision Series, did, conducted other library programs and was just one of the smartest and best people I've ever met in my life. And he passed away last month. And there's going to be, Charlotte and Dan Hall have arranged a Zoom tribute to Keith. And I think it's on the 28th. I don't have the information behind me, but.
One day.
Monday, yeah. So. I, you know, I'm still shaken up by it. And I think that it will be cathartic to, to get to talk to other people. And it's a wonderful gesture for Charlotte to have a tape then sent to his parents, which is Grant, his, I'm sure his wife, who will either be sent to table participate. But I just wanted to share with you all that I met Keith through the library. I never would have known him if it wasn't for Great Decisions and the library. And I'm eternally grateful that I had him and I was able to have him as part of my life. So it was really a terrible loss.
Yeah, it is sad. It was, it is someone with his caliber to, to leave us.
Thank you for that, Eileen. I don't know if I'll be able to join or not, but I'm glad the library is doing this. And I guess the only comment that I have is I'll just say that book sales are continued strong. I'm glad the bookstore is open periodically because it gets me new inventory, which seems to be selling well. I sold a genealogy book or two from the library just recently. I smile when that happens. And, and sales have been much steadier than in previous years. There would be these down seasons, like the summer would be slow. And it's just, it's been very, very steady and a lot of sales of, of expensive books. This past week I sold a book for $70 and another one for, I think, $50. Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for all your time and effort in doing that. That's just, I, I hope it's a labor of love for you.
It's fun. It's fun. And Kim seems to enjoy it too, so that helps. Okay. I think we're at the end of our meeting. Did I miss anything?
I think we covered everything.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
All right, a motion to adjourn.
Kathleen makes the motion. Eileen seconds. Okay, all those in favor, just raise your hand. Okay, anonymous, and we are adjourned. Thank you. And I guess we will be back October 20th for another remote, another Zoom meeting.
Okay.
Bye, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Bye, thank you.
Nice to see everybody.
Good night. Thank you.